And welcome to this evening's forum. Where we will hear from candidates for Mankato Independent School District 77. Four of whom will be chosen by you, the voters, in the election that will take place on November 3rd. My name is Edie Thorstensen. And I will moderate this forum, or you can call me Edie Thorstensen. My assistant is Maude Kwame. Helen Baumgartner will collect and screen questions from the audience. We are all members of the St. Peter area League of Women Voters. We thank volunteer timers Beth Soucy?
Soucy.
And Harry Solo. Allow me to take a moment to ask that everyone in this room, with the exception of members of the press, turn off their mobile phones and other electronic devices for the duration of the forum. Thank you. At least you can set them to vibrate. The League of Women Voters is a local, state, and national nonpartisan grassroots organization. We promote the active and informed involvement of citizens in the voting process. The League neither supports nor opposes political parties or individual candidates in any election. One of the League's policies is that no League member who is closely associated in some way with a candidate will be involved in planning or running an event that includes the candidate. We want to make it clear that that policy has been followed carefully for tonight's forum. Tonight, we will present questions to the candidates that address issues relevant to the upcoming election. These questions have been submitted in advance by email. Questions are also welcome from the audience here tonight. In fact, we encourage you. Please raise your hand and an usher will bring you a three-by-five card and pencil, or you can use your own paper if you wish. And we will collect your written question at any time during the forum. I would say please aim to submit it by 8:15, and no later. All questions are reviewed by members of the League before they are presented to the candidates. We will not ask questions that are written illegibly, that address personal matters unrelated to the elective position, that are unclear, hostile, friendly, supportive, or gratuitous, or that are submitted for the purpose of making a statement rather than gaining information. Multiple questions on one issue or similar issues will be consolidated and rephrased, but we will keep the essence of the questions to the best of our ability. All questions become the property of the League of Women Voters. We will follow a nonpartisan, unbiased, and impartial format designed by the League of Women Voters specifically, and this is especially for you who are candidates. The candidates will each have one and one-half minutes to introduce themselves. Our timekeeper will mark the time holding up a sign when 15 minutes remain.
Seconds.
Seconds. Oh, my gosh. Uh-oh. It's already out of control.
Thank you.
And a stop sign when time is up. Candidates may finish their sentence. Isn't that nice? And that's not, you know, like a sentence in jail. Upon completion of the introductions, each candidate will respond to questions when called upon by me, the moderator. Candidates will have one and a half minutes to respond to each question. At the end of the question period, each candidate will have one minute for closing remarks. Now, in alphabetical order, beginning with Ms. Baxter, I call upon the candidates to introduce themselves. Ms. Baxter.
Hello. My name is Mamink Baxter. And I have been a Mankato resident for almost, I don't know, since 95? Since I graduated from Tuskegee University. I've attended MSU and through MSU. I've had some great opportunities. Had a chance to go to Japan, got my master's in environmental science, also got my specialist degree, and my core competency done for principal licensure. I went back after I worked with the DNR for a moment, about four years, came back and got my GTL in science, so I am a licensed science teacher. I did my student teaching right here in East Junior High with Fred Berg. Great experience. I currently work at the College of Education. I'm the Student Relations Coordinator for the college, and so I advise all incoming freshmen and sophomores and transfer students that are going into elementary education and special education. I also teach the first-year experience course for our future teachers in our learning community. Our college values line up well with the core values of the district, which are integrity and respect, diversity, access, responsibility, and excellence. So I work within the College of Education's values to try to produce teachers or help produce future teachers that may be hired in our district or other districts. I'm interested in this position because I want to help future teachers become better at what they do.
Thank you, Ms. Baxter.
Thank you.
Ms. Brandon.
Thank you. I'm Judy Brandon. And let me start out by saying that I have a passion for learning and education. I got my first job as a teacher when I was six years old, and I came home from school every day and taught my four-year-old sister the day's lesson in reading. And she learned reading right along with me. Since then, every job I've held has had something to do with education. I'm a teacher. I'm a parent of two children who graduated from East High School. I've been a PTO president, an elementary school principal, and I've spent 15 years in two different decades on the school board as a member of the school board. Currently, I'm the board clerk. During my years of service, I've navigated severe budget crises, and we've celebrated years of growth. I've been part of the hiring process of two superintendents, which is a job I think is the most important job that a school board does. I'm currently serving on the Budget Committee, the Legislative Committee, and the District Facilities Committee. I think that my historical perspective gives me a deep understanding of where we've been and where we're going. I'm excited about the initiatives we have in place, and I'm eager to see them develop. I believe that I bring a unique perspective and skill set to the board, and that makes me qualified to continue to lead and support the work we do.
Thank you, Ms. Brandon. Mr. Braswell.
Hi. My name is Ben Braswell. I am a 17-year resident of Mankato. I moved here after being married and starting school at MSU. I am originally from New Mexico, born and raised off of the Navajo Reservation. So I come from an area where diversity was a very unique way of growing up. I have five kids in all three levels of school here. I have a third grader, a fifth grader, a seventh grader, a ninth grader, and an 11th grader. So I see where our schools are presently at, and I see where our teachers are presently at, and the wonderful things that are being done. My experience here within the schools and with the students especially is I have been a soccer coach with Mankato United, and I have seen students from all the different schools within the district, and worked with a lot of them and their parents. I've been a tutor for the 17 years that I've lived here of all sorts of students, which gets me to what I do. I'm a math instructor at South Central College. I got my degree in mathematics from MSU and have a master's in math education for 5 through 12. And I believe that my math background brings a unique experience of how I look at life and I actually manage the way that I do things within my family. And I believe that would be the way that I would do it within the board.
Thank you, Mr. Braswell. Ms. Hanson.
Hello. I'm glad to be here. Thank you for taking the time to be here with us. My name is Sarah Hanson, and I have served two terms on the Mankato Area Public School Board, and I'm seeking a third term. I have three children, and one of them is in seventh grade, one of them is a senior this year, and I have one who graduated a couple of years ago and is now in post-secondary here in Minnesota, at the University of Minnesota. Professionally, I work for a company that is headquartered in Manila in the Philippines. And my role is to develop the leadership and the skills that they need in order to work with American customers. So all of the people that I work with professionally are people who are using language skills where English is their second language, and I have a good appreciation culturally for how challenging it is for people to try and interact with American culture when that is not where they come from. And my, I think one of the things I've learned on the board that's really been important is that not having a narrow agenda, having a broad agenda, all students, all staff, all community members, we are all together. That said, if there was something that I really have close to my heart, it is early childhood. When I first ran for the school board about eight years ago, I'd say that we had less than 50 percent of kindergartners ready, and we now have more than 70 percent. And I look forward to focusing on people of all ages, including the youngest, because if we want to enclose the achievement gap, we need to start very young. Thank you, and I look forward to what we all have to talk about tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Hanson. Ms. Hendrix.
Hello. My name is Ann Hendrix, and I'd like to thank the League for providing this forum for us to get our information to you and for you to help understand what we do on the school board. I've been on the school board for a number of years, and I am the current board chair. I sit on seven different committees right now, but probably my favorite one is the Legislative Committee, where we have an opportunity to work closely with our legislators, as well as to bring forward the agendas that we feel are important here in the school district. I'm a retired special ed teacher. I worked for St. Peter Public Schools for a number of years, and my teacher placement was at the Minnesota Security Hospital. So that's where I spent my days and had an opportunity to come back here and be part of the Mankato School District. I have three adult children who graduated from Mankato East. I have two daughter-in-laws who graduated from Mankato East as well. I look forward to tonight's opportunity to share with you the work that we do here at the school board.
Thank you, Ms. Hendrix. Welcome. Mr. Sabri.
Thank you. My name is Abdi Sabri, and I also want to thank League of Women Voters for organizing this opportunity to bring the candidates to the, you know, to the Mankato community. Originally, I'm from Somalia. I was born to a nomadic family in East Africa, so I've come a long way since. But I've lived in the United States for over 30 years, and I've lived in many large metropolitan areas with a lot more problems than Mankato. And about seven years ago, living in Mankato and doing a professional job in the electronics industry, the doctors told me that I needed to move to a not highly polluted place. So two of my children had respiratory problems. And Mankato, according to the doctors, is the worst, I mean, Atlanta is the worst place when it comes to children with respiratory problems. So you can say I'm a calamity refugee. And I was looking for a small town with not a lot of pollution. So I called around the country, and I happened to have a friend that lived here in Mankato, and I moved here. And so it was a destiny for me to live in Mankato. And I found Mankato to be a wonderful, you know, community, the best I've ever lived in the United States. There's a lot of potential. So I'm a father of seven, and I've been trying to engage the school district, you know, for the last seven years, working with leaders in the school district to improve our public education. So my, all the three children go to MSU, South Central, and Ambevah, and then the three younger ones are still going to the district. And I have a two-year-old that's a future student. So my, I have a unique perspectives that are necessary on the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sabri. Mr. Whacker.
Yep. Thank you again to the League of Women Voters for providing this forum. My name is Darren Walker. It is spelled Whacker. I answered either one, so not to be confused. It will be spelled correctly on the ballot. Thank you. I have been a resident of Minnesota for over 15 years. I previously lived in northeast Nebraska and was a graduate of the University of Nebraska at Lincoln. I have been married for over 20 years to my wife, Deanne. We have three children. My son Trevin, who graduated from Mankato East High School and is currently at the University of Wisconsin-Madison. My daughter Kalen, who is a sophomore here at Mankato East, and a two-year-old son that will be starting kindergarten about the time that his sophomore sister leaves our home. Yes. Thank you for that laugh. I laugh every day because of that. I work primarily in education technology for an organization by the name of Hobson's. My role is working with K-12 districts in student college and career readiness and success management. It is something I'm particularly passionate about. My mother was a teacher. I have a number of aunts and uncles, as well as extended family, who have been involved in education their entire professional lives. I did not go down that particular route, but am very excited to have the opportunity to help support the good work and the educators that work in the Mankato district. And thank you all very much for the time that you've brought to us today.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Now, we will begin with the question portion of the forum. The first question will be asked of Mr. Braswell, followed by Mr. Sabri, Ms. Hendrix, Ms. Brandon, Ms. Hanson, Mr. Walker, and Ms. Baxter. Now, I don't expect you to remember all that, so I will call, I will repeat the order again later. And because there are quite a few people on the panel tonight, I will repeat the question whenever asked to do so. So, the question, the first question for Mr. Braswell. What past experiences have you had and what expertise do you possess which will support your work as a school board member?
Can I ask you to just repeat their question one more time, just so I hear everything that you were looking for?
Yes. What experiences have you had and what expertise do you possess which will support your work as a school board member?
My past experience, I think I heard Darren say the same thing, was being raised in a family of educators. Both my parents were teachers, so I saw what education looked like from an early, an early stage. And I have been, I feel like, a lot like Judy, an educator since a very young age because I started tutoring math once I figured out I was good at it. And not a lot of people were at the time, and so knowing how to teach people and knowing how to work with them was an important part. One of the things that I think that gives me my expertise in being able to work on the school board is knowing how to teach math to all different types of people and all different types of learners, and knowing how to do that in a single classroom. And knowing how to get my point across and to get the point across to where everybody understands. And I think that's going to be an important thing within a board, to be able to work together to where there's a bit of idea and collaboration, and then some more, like, reasoning and logical understanding behind what we're trying to do, to where when we come back around again, the decisions that have been made, the things that have been taught, you know, whatever's come across is solid, is forthright, is full of all the information that's necessary. And for me, as a math teacher, that's one of the big things that I try to present to my students is I don't just tell them how to do this. We have a whole idea and a whole discussion about how to come across it. And I think that'd be one of the parts for me that I would bring to the board.
Thank you, Mr. Braswell. Mr. Sabri.
My experience is, as a nonprofit leader, I'm the executive director, I'm one of the founders of African Family Education Center. My talent is to bring people together and give them, you know, help address social inequities. And there are many in any community that you go to. And I was given a public service award for doing public service, Jefferson Awards, in 2012, for the work that I do. I'm a commissioner for Region 9 Development Commission. I serve on money boards, including Blue Earth County Child Protection, PACP program, food program, Habitat for Humanity. I've served many, and I still serve many. And so my main area of skill is public service and bringing people together and give them an equal opportunity. And education is very important to our future. So it's very critical that we have an approach that's very inclusive, that gives children equal opportunity of education. And that's what I do, day in and day out. As a community leader and as a father of seven, I have three children that graduated from this school right here that are attending other universities. So my skills as a community leader, as a nonprofit leader, as a father, give me, you know, talent that's missing. And my personal experience, I have a lot of things that are needed on the board.
Thank you, Mr. Sabri. Ms. Hendrix.
Would you repeat the question, please?
Yes. It will be you first, and then Ms. Brandon, and then Ms. Hanson. And the question is, what past experiences have you had and what expertise do you possess which will support your work as a school board member?
Thank you. I think one of the major things that I bring to the school board is past experience on the school board. With that comes a certain level of training through our professional organization, the Minnesota School Board Association, and we are trained in that leadership. I think also I bring, because of that past experience, the ability to listen and to learn. We have surrounded ourselves as a board with reliable and trustworthy educational leaders who bring the information to us and give us that opportunity to talk about it, to analyze it, to hash it over, if you will, and decide which direction do we need to go. Not being afraid to challenge a little bit and ask for more, ask for more information. I think right now you have a board that is deeply committed to education, it's deeply committed to consensus, it's deeply committed to working together, and I think I continue to bring that to the board.
Thank you. The next person to answer the question will be Ms. Brandon.
Well, I could say ditto to much of what Ann Hendrix said. The training that we receive, the extremely capable people that we work with within the district, all support and help us with the work that we do. I briefly mentioned when I made my introduction that I am a professional educator. I have a background in instruction and curriculum, so I understand the discussions that center around curriculum and instruction. I've been serving on the Budget Committee. I have a very good understanding of the budget that the district works with and how it operates and how we are responsible to the community, to the taxpayers, for the money that we use to operate our buildings and our instruction. I think that the historical perspective I have as a school board member going back to 19, early 1980s, really helps me see where we've been and where we should be going. I've navigated several crises, budget crises, and, as I mentioned, we are now experiencing phenomenal growth, and it's a very exciting time.
Thank you. And now, it will be Ms. Hanson.
Okay. One way that I'm different from a lot of people up here is I'm actually not an educator, and I'm not from an education background. And I think when we think about what diversity on a board looks like, it factors in a lot of variables. And one of them is professional background. I'm not an educator, but I think that actually puts me in a strong position because I think we want to bring different perspectives. Professionally, I am somebody who works with data. I do analysis. I'm a very analytical person. I think if you have ever observed me at a study session, as both Judy and Ann have, and all of you would be welcome to do it anytime, I ask a lot of questions. I ask very pointed questions. I reframe what I've heard back to make sure I've understood, and then said, is there another way to look at this? And so that's sort of what I bring with the board that's here right now, and I think that's really an important skill set. One of the things I've learned as a board member is that it's really important to listen more than you talk. And I think when I first started, I didn't understand that as well as I understand it now. And listening to the experts, we have experts all around us, in our community, within our finance, finance, the business community, as well as the experts, many of whom are in the room tonight, who bring us the information that we need so that we can establish the vision and the direction. And professionally, I have to work within a budget. So some of the skills that come with just living and being in the business world are things that I naturally bring to this role. So, thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Walker.
Certainly. I would echo some of what Sarah indicated. I bring a little bit more of a business focus, but focused on education and the needs of education. I have been very active in statewide education issues and organizations. I serve in government relations with the Minnesota ACAC. So I have that particular different focus than maybe some of the other individuals on the group. But then also, for me, it is just really an understanding, I think, of the function a board should have in working for the success of students, in supporting the academic leaders, in supporting the educators that ultimately are going to assure that our students are successful. I've seen that from, you know, my own personal experience with my mother and the work that she's done in the school. I've seen the good work that has been done here in Mankato, and I simply want to and have a real passion about making the students of Mankato successful. And how can we positively impact, provide the resources, provide the support as a board to assure that that takes place?
Thank you, Mr. Walker. And Ms. Baxter.
Thank you. Past experiences that I've had that I think would support my work if elected as a school board member are, I am a licensed teacher in science, so I do know the teacher language. I have worked in schools. I've worked in bridges as an enrichment coordinator when it first started. I've worked in Garfield as a Student Relations Coordinator. I've also done long-term subbing for maternity leave in the district and short-term subbing. I've done several district administrative internships while completing my principal competencies. I've worked under Cindy Amoroso when she was curriculum and instruction here. I also worked under Judy Brandon when she was principal at Washington, with Les, with Rick Lund, with Ann Haggerty. I've done lots of leadership training, both at higher ed and also in the district, because you have to be relicensed every five years and you have to have a certain amount of hours. So I've done that. I've also been trained in Avid, and we are an avid district, so I know about that. At the university, I'm in, on the advisory board lead and also on the College of Education Leadership Team. I'm in charge of over $200,000 worth of scholarships that we hand out to our College of Education students. My top priority is student success, because they have to be successful in high school in order to get into college, and I want them to become teachers and go into education. Amen.
Thank you, Ms. Baxter. Now, the second question. And it will be asked first of Ms. Hanson, then Mr. Braswell, and then Mr. Walker. And then I'll name the rest of you once we get through the first round. Would you or would you not support an operating referendum in order to manage district resources to accommodate growth, and why? Or why not? So I'll read.
That was a long one. Yes. Could you repeat it, please?
Would or would you not support an operating referendum in order to manage district resources to accommodate growth, and why or why not? And I'll repeat it for each of you in turn if you wish. So we'll begin with Ms. Hanson.
Well, this is, this is an answer that I would give often. It's not a simple yes/no question, because I would not be making a decision like that in isolation. I would need a lot more information before I would be able to say a definitive yes or a definitive no. I would want to look at our current budget. I would want to look at our forecasts. I would want to look at our student growth. I would want to look at what isn't happening now that needs to be happening in order to start closing the achievement gap more than we have been able to. Then I could just go on and on. The number of questions that I would have, if we concluded collaboratively, working as a board and with the district leadership team, that it made a lot of sense to go out for a referendum, we would then agree to do that, and we would work collaboratively as a group to make sure that it passed when we did go out for it. So that's not giving you maybe what you want in terms of a yes or no, but that's the best answer that I can give, because that's the decision-making model that we as a board have historically used, and it's been very effective for us for decades and certainly for the last two terms while I've served. Thank you.
Mr. Braswell.
I very much agree with Sarah. I really like to, everything precisely as she said it. I'd like to add the fact that, you know, when you make those kinds of decisions, they aren't handled lightly. It isn't just a yes or a no. There's got to be some reason and some purpose behind it, reasons why you would support it, reasons why you wouldn't support it. For me, I think one of the biggest things is to answer the questions of why are we considering it and what's the purpose of it? And what is it going to do for the district and for the students? Is it because we are operating under a shortfall? Is it because we're operating or mismanaging our budget as it is? I think the budget is set there to help guide everything and to help give a lot of direction. And if we're missing that point, you know, we have to ask our questions why. And so I wouldn't even be able to give myself a definitive answer on how that would work. But I would know that my support would be directly for what would we do as a district for the betterment of our district and our students, and what would that look like?
Thank you. Mr. Walker.
If you wouldn't mind repeating the question.
Would you or would you not support an operating referendum? Would you or would you not support an operating referendum in order to manage district resources to accommodate growth and why or why not?
Well, I would say that this is an instance where perhaps some of the existing board members may have a little bit of an advantage in understanding why that might be a necessity. But I think that it would, again, as a board member, it's very important that we analyze the issues, that we look at the necessity that that might have, and then if it is something that needs to be pursued, not to necessarily make a decision here tonight and say yes or no, because there are too many factors that just simply come into play. So I would unfortunately, or fortunately, however you want to look at it, echo what has been said in the fact that I would just want to sit down with the board, with leadership, and carefully examine the issues and the necessity, and then if it is necessary, certainly take it to the community for a decision.
Thank you. Now, the same question will be asked first of Ms. Baxter, then Mr. Sabri, and then Ms. Brandon, and finally Ms. Hendricks. Would you like me to repeat the question?
Yeah, I'm just basically going to say, I'm playing junior varsity on this one because I'd be a new person. I would be sitting back just saying, all right, if I get the ball, I'm going to take my chances. But it would be about research and I would have to understand what we're doing, and so it wouldn't be a question that's just thrown out there. We would have, probably have people presenting. People would explain it to me. I'd know the inside and out of why we're doing this. I'd be able to explain it to the community if I was asked. So that would be something that basically I would be sitting in class, learning all I could about this first, before I would make any decisions. And then I know I'm not an individual. It's a team effort. So I would be looking to the team to say, what are we going to be doing on this and what's going to be our position when we bring it to the community?
Thank you, Ms. Baxter. Mr. Sabri.
Yes. And I agree with most of what has already been said. Board decisions are teamwork, so, and, and decisions are based on what's presented to the board. You know, the request comes from the school district officials, what the needs are, and then based on that, you know, the team decisions are made. You know, I looked, we look at every aspect and I'll definitely contribute to my aspect and my particular perspective to that decision, but growth is very important, that we need to support growth. I mean, there's no escaping the fact that Mankato is growing every year, and we have to support that. So that's, that's a necessity. But based on the requests and what's, what the factors are, you know, it's, the board has to make it, you know, it's a teamwork, so it's not an individual thing. You look at every aspect and you come to the best interest of, and that's what the job of the board is, to look at the needs and what the, you know, the taxpayers desire. And based on that, we have to, whatever money we get, we have to get the maximum available, maximum possible educational opportunity.
Thank you. Ms. Brandon.
Again, I agree with, with what's been said so far. Couple of pieces that maybe I can add to that is that when the board considers a referendum, we very carefully consider the impact on the taxpayers of the community. That's, that's a key piece. We have a community financial advisory committee that we consult when we're considering major changes like a referendum. And, and we also in the past have had focus groups in various parts of the community, open to people who can contribute their thoughts on whether this is something that the community would support and whether or not we should go forward with bringing a referendum to, to the community. We are in a growth period right now, and we have asked the, we had asked the taxpayers for a referendum, a bonding referendum, to build our new Prairie Winds Middle School. And right now, with the, with the growth, we feel that we have an operating budget that will accommodate our current enrollment. But we do know that the community is growing and that our enrollment will grow, so this is something I'm sure we will look at in the future.
Thank you. And Ms. Hendricks.
There's been so much said already, you know, I hate to just keep regurgitating some of that. The fact of the matter is, is our district has had a long history of financial responsibility and, and a long history of studying and predicting with great, a great deal of accuracy. We can predict our numbers of students, we predict our dollars that come to us, if and when we need to go for an operating referendum. It would take a great deal of study on the part of the board for that decision to go forward, and we would trust our leaders around us to bring us that information. I think the board and the school district as a whole has operated in a very open and honest way with all of our communities, keeping in mind that our communities go from Eagle Lake to Madison Lake to North Mankato and to Mankato. It's a huge number of people, and we feel a great deal of responsibility to our taxpayers when it comes time to make those decisions about building referendum or an operating referendum. If it comes to us as a need, we will certainly study it and discover the direction we need to go. Money is an important thing, but money has to have the support, and we have to use the knowledge that we have to use that, those dollars in an extremely responsible way, and I think we do that in our district.
Thank you. And we'll move along to question number three. What are your thoughts on how to close the academic achievement gap, achievement gap between Caucasian students and students of color in the Mankato School District? And we'll begin with Ms. Hendricks, followed by Ms. Hanson, and then Ms. Baxter. So, Ms. Hendricks.
I'm glad you identified achievement gap because we also talk about behavioral achievement as well as academic achievement. So if we address the academic achievement part right now, I would really have us continue to focus on the data information that we receive. We work with our children on a daily basis to find out what kinds of ways they learn, what we need to change, what we need to move in our curriculum. All of our students deserve growth. All of our students. We have a saying in the district that all means all, and that's very true. All students deserve growth. So as our staff, our teachers, and our leaders analyze the information that they have through testing and assessment scores, they can target their academic learning in that classroom. Our PLCs are the professional learning communities, our committees, communities, PLCs, that we use on our Tuesday mornings once a month, give our staff an opportunity to focus on individual students, individual classes, individual content areas, to develop a better academic way to go with students.
Thank you. Ms. Hanson.
Well, I have two thoughts about this. The first is, I think we're doing a lot of things right, right now. We have shifted, just in the last couple of years during my second term, to a framework that we call response to intervention. And what response to intervention means, that we approach each student individually and we make sure, tracking the data of how they are doing, that if something's not working and they're not learning and they're not progressing, we immediately respond appropriately. And we make sure that we have all the professional development going on in the background so that all of our educators in whatever capacity they serve are prepared to differentiate that instruction for each student. We need a little bit more time for this framework to really settle itself across the whole entire district, every classroom, every building. It's, it's relatively new, but I think we're doing a lot right. And we need to stay on this path and be consistent with it and give it a chance to work. One of the things under Superintendent Allen's direction and leadership is that we're not swaying around. We do not have initiatives that are throwing us around. We are steady, we keep the ship on a course, and we're seeing some progress. All of that said, not trying to defend or cover the backend of school districts, I think I would be remiss if I didn't say that, that from a social justice perspective, if we don't treat this as a community issue instead of a school issue, we're never going to close the achievement gap. If we have poverty at the levels that we increasingly have poverty, and if we have students showing up not ready for kindergarten from the very first day they're born or the first day they're in kindergarten, we're going to be fighting this for a long time.
Thank you. And now Ms. Baxter.
Can you repeat the question?
Yes. What are your thoughts on how to close the academic achievement gap between Caucasian students and students of color in the Mankato School District?
I think the Mankato School District are doing some things well, but they can be doing some things a lot better. I think they need to, we need to have some intensely focused efforts on working with students of color that are not meeting their standards by third grade or fifth grade, seventh, eleventh grade. I just think more can be done. I also think it's about putting people of color in positions of authority within the classrooms, and that's also on higher ed. That's why I'm working to produce more teachers of color, because if you don't see somebody in authority, you don't believe that you can be in authority. Students of color shouldn't only see people of color as security guards or people to put them down if they're having behavior issues. They want to see people that they can look up to and want to be like. So if they have a lead teacher in the classroom, they can say, I can be just like them. They can say, they look like me, their skin color looks like me. They may feel open to go and talk with them. And when you feel good and comfortable and safe in a classroom, you're more open to learning. Sometimes it's just about the relationships students have with a teacher that can help them be more successful. Being equal doesn't always mean best. Some students are going to need more than just equal. Some students are going to need intensive educational strategies provided to them to help them, whether it's summer, intensive summer, after-school programs, ELL. It's going to, we just need to have more resources put into that.
Thank you. Now, the same question will be posed to Mr. Walker, then Mr. Sabri, then Mr. Braswell, and Ms. Brandon. So begin with Mr. Walker.
Well, excuse me. A lot of the research that I've seen in this particular area really talks to the achievement gap and what we need to do to address that as early on, both for minorities as well as students of all backgrounds, as early as possible. Because if students don't have the resources, the appropriate support, educational supports early on, that gap just starts and continues to grow and grow and grow. In fact, I've seen some of the studies, I'm a big fan of a series called Freakonomics that addresses this very succinctly and very clearly, that we need to make sure that we're looking at what we can do as early as possible to intervene on behalf of those students. I would also agree, though, that we need to be looking at hiring policies within the district that represent the overall enrollment profile within the district, so that students are seeing in the classroom individuals that represent their background and who they are as individuals. And so that those role models are existing within the schools. And then finally, I would also say that we need to, as much as possible, look at where those opportunities are for engaging the broader community, the business community, providing opportunities for students to get out and experience life in a career or different options that they may want to explore.
Thank you. Mr. Sabri.
Thank you. From the outset, I really want to say that achievement gap is a misnomer. It's, achievement gap is an opportunity gap. If you, if you say achievement gap, that means you're blaming the children that they're somehow unable to achieve. It's, you know, the education is designed and, you know, put together by adults. So if, some of our children are not learning, that means we are failing as adults, whether we are teachers, community members, board members, you know. So we have to shift the mindset from, you know, achievement gap to an opportunity gap. As far as our district is concerned, there are actually more white children who are not meeting the achievement gap in terms of numbers. So in terms of percentage, yes, minority have a higher percentage than are not meeting. But in terms of total numbers, there are actually more white children. So it's about economic, you know, socioeconomic status of that particular family. Poor families tend to have a higher percentage of, you know, who are not meeting the achievement that they're supposed to be. So how can we correct that? You know, public schools are a public institution, and change takes time. And diversity is something relatively new in, in Mankato. And I'm really proud to say, I've worked with the school district for the last seven years, they've already started the process that will make a difference, that, you know, staffing diversity, hiring diversity, that's all happening already. And I'm proud to say that, you know, that things will change once we correct the picture and we change our mindset.
Thank you. Mr. Braswell.
My thoughts on closing that achievement gap or the idea behind it, I think is, really truly has to become community-based. I think as individual communities, we have a responsibility to our children, and I, you know, that's why we become taxpayers, and that's why people like me are wanting to be on the board, because, you know, I'm putting my time and effort into my own children. But I think that there's ways that we can do that for all the children, for everyone. And I think that's important for me to kind of consider the idea of what we do in the community and, and how we bring that about in the community to, to really close that idea of a gap. Whether there is a gap or there isn't, how big it is, how we, you know, how do we measure that? All those things are going to be very important for us, but it requires a lot of community support. It requires a lot of the educational support, too. I think that when you talk about wanting to close the gap and you bring the teachers involved, I would never want to tell a teacher, well, you know, it, it's up to you to close that achievement gap. It, it isn't just up to them, it's up to the whole community to help close that. It's part of that teacher's responsibility to be one of those ones that foster that change and to bring that in there. I think that gets down to our leadership. I know that being involved with some hiring committees here, that we have brought in some phenomenal people as leaders within our community and within our district, and I think those leaders can provide a lot of that help to help with understanding where should we work and how should we work efficiently to be able to close that gap in any way possible.
Thank you. And Ms. Brandon.
We've heard some really good ideas, and I support everything that's been said so far. I think that it's important to note that, that we are, as a district, expanding our early childhood opportunities as, as quickly as we have space for them. We know that there are families that are waiting, and we are eager to provide that service for them. I think that we're going to solve this problem one child at a time. We disaggregate data, we look at data on a practically daily basis in terms of our student progress. We look at, at research-based instructional strategies, and we provide the finances for our teachers to, to learn and engage in using those instructional strategies. I think it's important that we develop relationships as a staff, that our staff develops a relationship with students, and we've heard some things this year and reports from schools that tell us that our staff is doing just that. Teachers going out to neighborhoods and meeting families before school starts. Teachers that are engaging families directly when they have something they want their students to be involved in. And I think that if we engage families and we begin early, we will address this need with our students.
Thank you. And now we're going to take an, a question that was submitted by the audience, and it will be presented first to you, Mr. Walker, then to Mr. Sabri, and then to Ms. Hanson. Explain how well the district is meeting the needs of gifted and talented students. What would you improve or change? What would you maintain?
Well, I, I guess I think I have a unique perspective, well, not unique, but a perspective on this because my son Trevin, I guess in some respects, who graduated just last year, could have been considered gifted academically. He was at the top of his graduating class at East. And I think the AP program has been particularly effective both here and as I've understood at West. And I'm excited to see the expansion of that, that continues to be the case. And then I've also been involved in some of the initiatives focused around expanding gifted education in the district. I know that there's been specific hires that have been put into place in order to enhance that program and the focus that we bring, which I certainly support. And I would just, I guess, at this point, until some of those things continue to advance further, just support the direction that the district has been going and encourage them to continue down that path and look for those opportunities so that students that need that extra level of challenge, whether that be PSEO, whether that be AP, whether that be other opportunities, truly get it. And then just to wrap up, I think if you look at what the robotics team at East did this past year... I think if you look at what the robotics team at East did this past year, it's been absolutely phenomenal, and just another opportunity for those gifted students to really contribute and challenge themselves, which we really need to do.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Mr. Sabri?
Yes, one of the programs that the district is doing, and some of my children are already involved, are the Cluster Program, which challenges children who need to be challenged, you know, so that they can grow even further, so they're not bored in class. And that's, you know, that's very impressive. And we should, we need to continue that and expand it to include more children. And through indicating the parents and stakeholders about the program, so that everybody is well-informed about its availability, and so they can power them, you know, empower themselves how to support their children to be part of that program. AP, PSEO, all these are science programs, all these are wonderful, and we should continue and expand them. And it has been expanding in the district. You know, seven years I've been here, the numbers are increasing, you know, from year to year, and we should continue on that path.
Thank you. Ms. Hanson?
Could you please repeat the question?
I sure will. Explain how well the district is meeting the needs of gifted and talented children. What would you improve or change, and what would you maintain?
Improve and maintain, all right. This is an area where, for many years that I've been serving, it wasn't an answer where I could give as favorable a response as I would have liked to have been able to give for our district. The question, if we are teaching new content to students and we ask the question, "What do we do if they already know it?" There have been a number of years where we couldn't answer that question as well as we should have been able to. And we identified that as a problem. Parents were very vocal about that being an issue, that they were concerned about. And so that raised up the issue to the surface, and we are now addressing it in a way that we never have previously. I would like to say we're already there, and that every child who's ready to be challenged more is being challenged more. But what I really believe is happening is that we've got this framework that I just talked about in my last answer, where we are now responding individually to each student based on their progress. And if they're already knowing the content, we're going to respond differently than if they need review, so that our teachers are prepared to challenge those students. And what I believe is happening is that the professional development is happening as we speak to help all teachers be prepared to do that. I don't know that it's happening right now in every classroom, and this is where me being impatient isn't great for serving on a school board, because I'm ready for it to be done now, and I don't think we're there. But I do think we have the right systems in place. We have the right framework in place, and we now need to let the process work so that our GT needs can be met for all students, just like we've always been trying to, for children who, you know what, let me add one thing, and you're about to knock me out. I like our new name, which is Talent Development. We're not calling it GT anymore. It's Talent Development for All Students.
Thank you. You made it.
Barely. I had to, I had to pretend like it was one long breath.
Now, the same question will be addressed to Mr. Braswell, Ms. Baxter, Ms. Brandon, and Ms. Hendrix. So, Mr. Braswell?
Thank you. I remember taking a course to receive my master's in math education, and it was on the exceptional student. And exceptional student was defined in a number of different ways. And I think when we try to work on defining our exceptional students, it's not just those ones who excel at their grades. It's not just the ones who excel in math alone or in English alone. It's the ones who really have a passion and a desire for their education to really go and take some strides to do some great things. And I think that's the side of what this whole gifted and talented effort has taken place. I can say that as a parent, because I remember sitting in on a couple meetings about the gifted and talented work that we're doing with my own son, and where he's at, and what he's doing, and how he's being challenged. And I think that when we have students who are ready for their education, once we begin to challenge them and engage them that way, it changes what really the framework looks like of education and really how it's supposed to be done. I have to say that, you know, how I feel about how the district is meeting the needs, I think they're beginning some great things. And I know it's not even close to over. There's so many more wonderful things that are coming. There's so many more wonderful things that can be done. But I look at the opportunities that are being provided, the availability and the resources that we have, the engagement that our students are going through, such as like enriched courses, our accelerated sciences, which I know my daughter has done, advanced opportunities, and even doing those things at a young age was going to be very important.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Baxter.
Can you repeat the question one more time?
I sure can.
Explain how well the district is meeting the needs of gifted and talented students. What would you improve or change, and what would you maintain?
Okay, I'm thinking this is a question for past school board members, because if you weren't a school board member, that's going to be hard to answer, because you wouldn't have been on any of those reports on how gifted and talented is doing. So from the higher ed standpoint, I think Mankato is doing a great job, because we have a lot of students coming in that have gotten threes or better on their AP tests, or they have been taking PSEO classes, and those numbers have been increasing. Heard that recently in a school board meeting. So that is great, and so that looked like that trend is going to go up. So whatever we're doing at the high school level seems to be working out really nicely, and we're enjoying it at the higher ed level. What I would like to know is how many of those students that are in AP and PSEO are students of color that are taking those rigorous classes. So that's something I'd be interested in knowing a little bit later. And my son was never one of those gifted and talented students, so he was never recruited for that, so I don't know how that would have worked. We were at the other end getting like reading services, but he is doing great now and at MSU. So from the higher ed, I think that Mankato is doing well there. I would also like to find out, though, what they're doing for the K through eight, because I do see the results in the high school. Good job, district.
Thank you. Ms. Brandon?
I'm glad that Sarah mentioned the change in name to Tal- Talent Development, because I believe that every child is gifted in something, and it's our responsibility to figure out what it is and help that student grow in that talent area, area of talent. It could be the obvious ones, of course. We see students who have great art talent, or students who are gifted in physical education and sports. But we need to find that talent in every student. We do have a number of students that are participating, increased number of students participating in AP classes and getting a three, which is what, a three or better, which is what they need for it to count for college credit. And I believe that the numbers of students of color who are participating is also growing, and that was exciting for us as a board member to hear. I think we just received, if I'm correct, a wonderful gift from a private individual for our gifted and talented program, our talent development program, and I know that that's going to be a wonderful resource as we continue with teacher training and helping our teachers recognize and take advantage of the resources that they need to help each student develop.
Thank you. Ms. Hendrix?
Thank you. I think we've all heard, or we've heard enough about AP, how that has changed and how those numbers are increasing. I think it's important for us to remember as a community that just this past year, we had a study group come in from the University of St. Thomas and evaluate our talent development program, and go through a lot of work with our teachers and with our new coordinator, and what are the steps that we need to take next. We're in the process of that. I have to give kudos to Ms. Hanson, who is the poster person for the gifted and talented program. She has really worked hard at keeping that on the surface and was part of that study when they came in. Part of the things, part of the work that we are doing that in the district right now is to continue to develop talents within our teachers. What do we do with the students? How do we continue to have our student achieve when they've already got the answer to the question? They know what that is. How do we have them go deeper rather than just more? For many years, it was just more rather than deeper knowledge. So within our talent coordinator job and director, she is continuing to work with our classroom teachers, developing additional materials and different directions, additional directions to go with our students.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Now, for the fourth question, for the fifth question, this will come first to Ms. Brandon, then Ms. Hanson, and finally to Mr. Braswell. And the question is, what role does Student Support Services play in impacting student achievement? What role does Student Support Services play in impacting student achievement? And we begin with Ms. Brandon. Repeat it one more time, please.
What role does Student Support Services play in impacting student achievement?
Okay. Student Support Services covers a wide variety of services that we provide for students. Sometimes it's a behavior specialist, or a reading specialist, or a math specialist. Each of these students and each of these professionals interact in one-to-one or small group opportunities to address whatever the needs of the students are. We, they are critical to the way we are individualizing or differentiating our approach to each and every student. Sarah mentioned Response to Intervention, RTI, and our RTI program is based on research-based strategies, and students are started at the level that they're at and often accelerated to catch up with their classmates. These services are absolutely critical in helping us close the achievement gap and also in helping students achieve at a rate that's appropriate for them.
Thank you. Ms. Hanson?
I would, I agree with everything that Judy just said. To add to that, I would say, from my perspective as a board member, that we can't close the achievement gap without Student Support Services. That's how critical it is. Because when we look at how we meet the needs of each individual student, as well as a classroom of students, that is not a single teacher standing by themselves in that classroom teaching. There's paras involved. There's intervention teachers who are involved. There's building administrators who are involved. There's special ed that's involved where appropriate. All of those people work together. We have curriculum coaches who are advising our teachers on how to most effectively use our intervention strategies. And if that wasn't a team effort, I think we would not be able to move forward the way that we're moving forward right now. So I don't, honestly, I don't know what else I can add. Student Support Services is invaluable. It's a core to what we do, and with the strategies that we have in place right now, they play a pivotal role in making sure that we do move forward with every student progressing.
Thank you. Mr. Braswell?
I really like how Sarah said something about how many people can be involved. And it's really how many people can be involved in the education of one student, just one. And they can really focus on that one, and really helping that one become a very good student and a successful student. I wrote down, as I was thinking about these things, that Student Support Services really becomes that student's cheerleader. They are there to really help that student find their success. They back them up. They support them. They give them everything that they need. They help develop the resources. They individualize the resources. They make it something that is for that student alone. And when we do that for each and every single individualized student, we're doing something amazing, and it takes that Student Support Service to do that. I see that at the college level and what it does, but I see it happening at the, at the school level. I see it around my kids. My kids talk about the people that they see come in their classroom. And there's people who are coming in and they are working with one student, but my students are affected by that. My children are affected by that, and other children become affected by that. We see them because it's a collaboration between more than just one individual, creating education and creating wonderful educational opportunities.
Thank you. Ms. Hendrix? Oh, I should tell you who's coming up. I'm sorry.
Oh, that's all right.
You are the next. You are the next, and then it will be followed by Mr. Whacker, Ms. Baxter, and Mr. Sabri. She's flexible.
I'm so flexible. It's hard to continue to add things to what we've already heard. The depth and breadth of Student Support Services is just critical to what we do with our students who need that additional piece, that additional refocus, that additional support that goes along. It's, as Ms. Hanson and Mrs. Brandon said, it's special ed, it's physical therapists. It might be the school psych or the school psychologist that comes and works, or the social workers that come and work. And it's the engagement with the family that is that last piece that comes along with it. It's, it's, as Ms. Hanson said, it's pivotal to a student's achievements. It's critical to our achievement as a district.
Thank you. Mr. Whacker? Walker?
We answered everything.
If I can't spell it right, I can't expect you to pronounce it right, so that's not a problem. I know who I am. I don't think, but anyway, I don't want to get on the ditto train here and say yes, 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 all the way down. I'll just add a few additional points. I think Student Support Services is so critical, because we cannot put the sole responsibility of educating our students on our teachers. It needs to be a focus that is school-wide, and that means that we need to bring in supports, sometimes very specifically targeted students, so that they do not fall behind, or so that they can close their individual achievement gap. That they have someone ultimately in the school that cares about them, that understands what they need, and is helping them to achieve in the classroom, to achieve beyond the classroom. And that just becomes critically important. I have friends in the district who have had children who have had Asperger's, and the support services that have been in place in order to assure that a student with that sort of learning challenge can be successful, it has been phenomenal. And the results that this family has seen has been great and allowed their son to go on to other opportunities and be very successful. I've heard many other stories from other families that I know in the district, but at the end of the day, it is because we need those resources so that students have what they need in the way that they need it in order to truly achieve here in Mankato.
Thank you. Ms. Baxter?
Well, once again, I can only talk about what I think Student Support Services may be, because I don't know exactly. I know it at the college level. But I think it's about relationship building, and that those services need to be individualized, personalized, supportive, encouraging, and foundational, meaning that you can have scaffolded learning on what a student is taught and how the next person that comes in to support that student can build upon what the last person did with that student. I also think it's about hiring specialists for those specific needs. Also, support staff to help those specialists. It can't be just on the specialist alone. Tutoring and teachers that are willing to teach outside the box, do something unconventional that may have great outcomes for students. It starts with support for the student, the teacher, the family, the community, but it's actually the responsibility of the leadership to make sure that Student Support Services are doing what they're supposed to. And that's done through a collaborative effort, shared stewardship, and accountability by both the school board, the leadership in the schools at the school levels, and the community giving back to the schools to make sure that we're accountable and getting it done for Student Support Services.
Thank you. Mr. Sabri?
Thank you. And Student Support Services, a lot has been said already, but I'm just going to add on what I think should be added. We just, Student Support Services, as the name says, should support any particular student that has, that comes to that service. And they should identify, this should be the front line, and identifying the underlying issues for that particular student. It could be within the school system. It could be at home in a social context. It could be health-related. So the Student Support Services should have the skills and professional training needed to identify that particular problem, to correct and get that student on their way to achievement.
Thank you very much. Now, the last question, once again, is from the audience, but I think it's on our minds, all of ours. What is the single biggest challenge in the next two years? And we'll begin with Mr. Sabri.
The biggest challenge is to change our attitude as adults. And it relates to the so-called achievement gap, which I call an opportunity gap. The, Mankato, as well as Minnesota, as well as the United States, we are on a path to a diversity like we have never been before. The sooner we get used to the fact that all children are the same, no matter what zip code they live in, no matter what zip code they live in, what the color of their skin is, what their family's economic status is, what their background is, the better we are as a community to succeed. We must change our attitude and correct our social biases and give children an equal opportunity of education. Public education, that's what it's supposed to do, an equalizer for all children. Children should not be responsible for the, you know, status of their family, economically or otherwise, and should have an open, you know, an equal opportunity to succeed so that they can become productive citizens tomorrow, that support when we retire, that support us when we retire.
Thank you, Mr. Sabri. Excuse me. Ms. Baxter?
I'm going to say from my personal and immediate view that I think the single biggest challenge is getting the community to support the greater good of all. Sometimes I see community members get into a silo about east should do this better, or west should do this better, or Rosa Parks should do this better, instead of saying, what can we do to raise up all students so that we have the most successful students from our community as a whole, so our community can be lifted up, so our community can be getting more national awards, based on that lowest achieving student has had the greatest growth. And it's all about getting the community to not just look at the top and making the top go higher, but making that bottom go higher. So, if our worst student, or student, the lowest achiever, is achieving and has doubled or tripled their success, then we as a community are a success, and our schools are a success. People are going to want to come into schools that are thinking about those students, but also maintaining our higher end, because everybody has to be challenged. Because in the end, it's about putting out the best, most successful students that we can possibly do. And I'm a little bit competitive, so I want Mankato to be at the top of everything, whether it's sports, academics, all of that. Mankato wins.
Got it. Okay, Ms. Hanson?
My thoughts align very closely with Abdi's. I think education access. Right now, the gap from a poverty perspective is growing so wide that we are swimming up the river. And we need to, as a community, this is not a school issue, I'm answering this from a community perspective. We, as a community, need to address the issues of hunger, homelessness. I mean, we're at a point right now where we are tracking homelessness rates of preschoolers. So, as a community member, say, what does that say about us as a people, that we are having to track homelessness of two-year-olds? And until we can address that as a community and make sure everybody has what they need, safe place to sleep, food to eat, security, not living in a car, until we, as a community, can address all of those issues and make sure that everybody then has education access, then we are on the right path as a community. And it is the responsibility of everybody in this room, everybody in this town, all 144 square miles that our district covers, it's the responsibility of every adult to address each of those issues. So, that's, I think, our biggest challenge right now, and will continue to be over the next two years.
Thank you, Ms. Hanson. Ms. Hendricks?
Thank you. In the next two years, I think we're going to continue to face the idea of, well, not the idea, the actuality of the growth in our district. As we know, our community is just growing by leaps and bounds. With that comes some of the sidelines that we've just heard about, the homelessness, the people coming into town. So, being sure that we're accurate, continuing our accuracy in predicting our numbers, making sure our buildings are responsive and ready for the people who are going to be coming in, making sure that our communities are ready for the continued growth that they're experiencing, aligning our curriculum and keeping our curriculum relevant to what's happening in our district. Our economics in Mankato and in our Mankato area really depend upon our schools and the folks that we are developing and putting out into our workforces, whether they're the 16-year-olds working at that after-school job, or whether it's the 18-year-old who's graduated and has decided to go into the workforce. It's a partnership. It's a partnership between our community, it's a partnership with the district in how we continue to manage and handle the growth and the economics of our area.
Thank you. Mr. Braswell?
For me, I think the single biggest challenge that we're going to experience within the next two years, I think, has to do with a little bit of what Ms. Hendricks said, with the growth of our community. I know that when I sat on the board that helped with the discussions of putting together Prairie Winds Middle School, the idea of how many students we were going to take to fill that school is going to happen this fall. It's going to happen right away, because we do have that kind of growth happening. And we can see that growth in any of our schools and in any of our classrooms, too, and we have classrooms that hit a certain level of capacity. I think it's going to be important for us to be able to meet the needs, not just within our buildings, but within our staff, within our faculty, to where we can provide enough classrooms and enough space so students can get efficient learning. When you reach well beyond what your class maximums are, especially for our faculty who are trying to teach, you know, maybe a science class where they need that space, and they're trying to fill it with 45 students, that's just not possible. And we're seeing that kind of change happen, and we need to be able to meet those needs, whether it's going to be scheduling needs, whether it's going to be faculty needs, or whether it's going to be building needs. We need to find a way to help address that, and I think it's going to take place within the next two years.
Thank you. Ms. Brandon?
Thank you. I think a lot of important issues have been raised. I think of growth in the community, which means growth of our school age population, means growth in diversity, it means growth in economic diversity in the community, and I think that growth is the umbrella under which all of these issues fall. We are growing as a student, as a student, our student enrollment is growing at a rate of about 100 students a year. That is much more than we have in the past. And if we look at the growth rates, our growth right now is in the elementary level. Our entering kindergarten class is much bigger than our exiting senior class, and this is going to continue for a while. So, I think that if we look at growth as the umbrella for all of these issues, they will be important to the community as a whole, and particularly important to the school district.
Thank you. And Mr. Whacker?
Yeah. Ultimately, it is the growth that we are seeing in our schools and our community, and our response to it as school leadership, as a school board, that I think will be the most important issue. It's going to impact facilities. It's going to impact the achievement gap and how we can assure that all students have equity of education, equity of opportunity. It's going to impact the resources that we bring into play, and it's also going to have a direct impact on the economic viability of Mankato in the future. We are educating our future leaders right now. We need to make that investment right now in order to assure that businesses have the employees that they need, that the young people that are coming up are starting the industries and the businesses in this community for the future that help us to grow. And so, the response that we have to growth and ensuring that students are as prepared to do careers that they are passionate about, that they are excited about, and that they are well-prepared for, is what I see the most important policy and need going forward.
Thank you. Well, we've reached the end of the question period, and now you each have one minute to conclude your remarks, and we'll begin with Mr. Walker and with Ms. Baxter.
Well, thank you again to the League of Women Voters for this opportunity. Thank you all very much for showing up this evening and taking time out to pose questions. I guess I would just like to say, I don't think that there is a bad option for you up here. So, I hope that this has been an enlightening evening for you. I hope that I can count on your support due to my experience, the differing background that I would bring to the board, and the excitement and the passion that I have for helping students to achieve for the future of Mankato. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Mr. Sabri?
Likewise, I also want to thank League of Women Voters and the participants here tonight and for their questions. My biggest thing is that, you know, as we grow as a community, and we have the right-sized community, we're not too big, we're not too small, and we have all the factors that are needed for a healthy community. We have a lot of potential. And based on that, we must have a board that's very representative of its own community. And our school district is about 20% minority, and the only man on the board is also not running again. So, we need a man on the board. And for that reason, I think I'm the right man to be on that board, because of my, because of my, you know, unique experiences that are not also available on the board. But, you know, like Mr. Walker said, we have great choices here. These are all good choices. But, it's very important that our board is representative of our community and our all experiences so that we can make the right decisions for our community.
Thank you. Ms. Hendricks?
Thank you. I'd like to, again, thank the League for having us here and for the community members who've come out tonight. This is one of the largest crowds I've ever seen at a forum, and I really appreciate it. I think you've had an opportunity to hear our voices, hear some of our views. As you've discovered, in all of us up here, we have a broad view of educational policy and decision-making. There's no single platform which there's no room for when it comes to a school board. We are all in this together. I do ask for your vote on November 3rd. I'm not a guy, but I think I've done okay for the last few years. I'm still able to stand up. I have to poke you a little bit here. But, I would appreciate your vote on November 3rd, and thank you for attending tonight.
Thank you. And Ms. Hanson?
Thank you to the League. I reiterate, this has really been a lot of fun for you all to be here. I wish you would all come to board meetings. It would be fun if you were there also. I've enjoyed this evening, a lot of good conversation, a lot of good candidates. I hope I have earned your vote. I'm reliable, I'm stable, fiscally conservative, make sure our resources are being used appropriately. We're shifting towards needs-based allocation of those resources. I'm eager to be a part of that process, and I hope I've earned your vote. This has been great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Braswell?
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for being here. We had a discussion, wondering if we were going to be outnumbered by the crowd, and we certainly were. It's been an engaging process for me to even hear myself say some of the things that I've said, because it's in my head. But, I wonder, how do I really feel about that? Because I've never sat and been posed some of the questions that I've thought about before. But, I think that also brings a very unique and fresh look at what the school board has and what it can be. I know there is, there's three current board members that are running, and there's four open spots. That leaves possibly one, but really four open positions for what can be done here within the school district. I think change is a phenomenal thing. I think change creates growth all the time. But, I think the change has got to be thoughtful change, and it's got to create thoughtful opportunities within what we want to provide within our school district. And I do think that I have the opportunity to do that and the ability to do that, and I believe people would agree with that, that no me in any different facet from outside of the schools. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And Ms. Brandon?
Thank you to the League for hosting this forum this evening, and thank you to everybody who came tonight and gave up some of your valuable time to hear what we had to say. In the Mankato schools, we say "all means all," and that reminds us every day that every one of us is here to serve every student to the best of our ability. The school board is part of that all. We also know that we mean a lot of things to a lot of people, and every day, we work to meet those expectations. As a school board member, I'm proud of the hard work that we've done, and I'm eager to continue to support our students and community as we forge ahead. So, I appreciate, I would appreciate your vote on November 3rd.
And Ms. Baxter?
All right. I just want to say thank you again, and thank you for the water, and thank you for everybody coming. Kind of like if anybody watches The Voice and Blake, like, pick me, pick me. I feel like I'm the new kid on the block. I just moved into town, and I'm like, you know, I want a part, to be able to play in this game. I think I've proven by just my background, being a licensed teacher, that I work at the College of Education at MSU, that I'm all about producing teachers and student success, both through the K-12 and at the higher ed, because we do want our students to move on if they're not going to go right into the workforce. But, I just want an opportunity to make a difference and make some change happen. But, I'm not a team of one. It's a team of the whole school board, and I just want a chance to be on the team. So, pick me, pick me.
Thanks, everybody. This concludes our forum for this evening. I'd like to thank the candidates for sharing their thoughts on the issues and for doing it in such a pleasant and civil and entertaining way as well. Thanks go out to our audience for your participation, and special thanks for all the questions you asked. There were far too many that we could pass along to the group here, but please feel free to speak individually with the people here, I hope, if you can stay on, or contact them. And, yes, and we want to thank our volunteers, timers. And I want to put in a word for Lynn Solow, who is the president of the League, because she was the person who especially reached out to the various groups of which you are part. And I think that was very helpful. And besides that, you, I guess, probably talked with each other. So, that's one reason why we have a very vigorous audience tonight. This forum will be aired on KTV, Mankato's Public Access Channel, that'll be Channel 8, or Chartered 180. I don't know what these mean here, but it will be televised most likely at the end of the week. Okay, got it. Those of you who are interested in the League of Women Voters can speak to any of our members tonight, pick up a brochure, give us your contact information on our attendance sheet located near the exit, or talk with one of us. We'd welcome you with open arms, and both men and women who are interested in democracy, we'll put it in the big terms, are welcome to join. And last but not least, please vote on November 3rd. I have a feeling that you're going to do that. I see it in your eyes. If you are not registered to vote, you can do so at the polls in Minnesota. And for answers to all your questions about voting, go to the Secretary of State voter information website, www.minvotes.org. And we have some handouts out on the table here that will help you get there. And you can also register that way. So, thank you so much again. We hope to see you again.
People can vote early. There's no excuse early voting. So, they don't have to wait for November 3rd. They can go to the district office, and they can vote.